So if we can reconvene our meeting to open session, the board has been in executive session since six o'clock this evening to discuss several confidential employee matters and a tenure candidate review. To begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go through introductions if everybody wants to give a wave. We have from the board, Will O'Beare, Jonathan Fishbein, Christine Beck, Wendy Sampson, Meredith Moriarty, Chris Meyer, and myself, Holly Dellenbaum. And from administration, we have Jody Monroe, Dave Hurst, Judy Kehoe, Kathy Johnston, and joining us also tonight, we have Ray Nardelli. First up on the agenda is approval of minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the January 6th, 2021 regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second. Session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? That carries. Next, item three, meeting reports, our superintendent's report.
Thank you. I have a few announcements. The first has to do with our Bethlehem High School Poetry Out Loud contest. This was online this year. We had 11 students participate. And two faces who have been participating in the past, Pamela White, repeated as the champion, and Naira Santalies, repeated as the runner-up. So this year's first place win came down to a single point. And they'll both represent B.C. at a regional poetry out loud competition in February. So I'd like to wish both of them good luck. Also, in regards to COVID testing, we did begin our staff COVID testing last week. We began with our middle school and high school staff. This week, we're doing our elementary staff. And we are planning to do student testing, but we are waiting some follow-up guidance from Albany County Department of Health on how to best handle some of the positive, any positive results that we may get. So more to come on that. And to follow up with that, next week, I will be holding two parent forums to check in at the mid-year point. We have sent a couple of reminders and asked people to submit questions in advance. We do want to try and respond to as many of them as we can. The sessions will be Tuesday, January 26 at 10:00 a.m. And Wednesday, January 27 at 6:30 p.m. So hopefully, we'll get a good turnout with that. And I wanted to ask Judy Kehoe, the governor, did just announce some budget information, and she has just some preliminary information that we just received. This is very early on, but I'd asked Judy to give us a quick update on where things are looking as we head into the budget season.
So yes, the runs are here. And remember, the number one rule that I ask you to remember every single year is you cannot look at what's on the runs and equate that to what the district will actually be receiving. We will be getting additional information over the next week or so as the various associations are pouring through the bill information. But what we do know is that we do have a recurring proposal on there. We've seen this the last few years where the various separate aid categories, particularly for transportation aid and BOSI's aid, are combined into a single line called services, combined services aid. So until we get to drill down into what those underlying formulas are, we're not sure what those adjusted totals will be. We also note that the building aid numbers on the aid runs do not reflect the new aid that is coming from the $32 million project that we just wrapped up on. And that's about close to $1.7 million, so that needs to be manually adjusted. We are still expecting that aid to flow in the coming year. So that will be a sizable addition to the aid. The only other change in the aid that's worth a mention is the STAR program was added in there as an addition to the aid numbers. And then it was pulled out as a subtraction, and it was offset by a COVID supplemental stimulus. So that's the piece that you've probably been seeing in the clipping services and on the news, that the ultimate amount of aid, we won't know until the federal government takes action and decides how much, if any, aid will come down to the state. The STAR was an interesting change because that's really a separate program. And when homeowners have that credit taken on their individual property tax bills, that credit comes directly off of our levy. And then the state turns around and reimburses that to us over the course of the year. So that's never been included on those aid runs before. So the big question that I need to have answered is, if the $4 million and change for that supplemental stimulus is merely to offset what they're now showing as a potential reduction in the STAR, it's really not a large gain for us. It could only be $350,000. So we do need to sort through that. And I guess the good news is we had been anticipating that we might have a $3 million reduction in our aid. So at least what was released today isn't any worse than that. And hopefully, it will be better in terms of the impact. So we will have more analysis and more information as we get closer to rolling out the actual budget. But that is the quick take on today's review of the preliminary totals.
Thanks, Judy. And then our next board meeting, I'll be doing the state of the schools, which will look quite a bit different than in years past. And then that kicks off our budget season that Judy was just referring to. And then we'll be, at each of the subsequent meetings, we'll be doing the different departments and looking at their overall budget. So that's my report for this evening, if anyone has questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Jody or Judy?
And Jody, on the consent forms that you sent out to families, do we have an idea of how many we got back? Or whether people have been declining or consenting? Just some information about how those are working?
The overall consent has been tremendous. The percentage is very high. I know, Dave, you had the tally most recently. It's, do you know what the overall percent is?
Yeah, I'm pulling it up right now. So to date, we have 2,411 that have consented, 637 that have not, and 418 that have not returned at all. So we're at about 80% consent.
Yeah, so we had a great response, and we appreciate the parents' support to move forward with testing.
Any other questions? Next on the agenda is our board report. And first, I wanted to do a little plug for the Theater Without Annette's premiering, their fall play on the Bethlehem High School or District YouTube channel. It's called Life After, and it's premiering on Friday at 7:00. And there have been a number of high school kids that were working on it. And it was written by Amy Ruse, one of our Slingerlands teachers. And the kids did it all virtually. So it was great to see that they were working to still keep theater alive in the district, even under these challenging circumstances. So I'm hoping that if you need something to do on Friday evening, you can go to the theater from your sofa. I also wanted, because it's today, to really acknowledge the challenge and thank our social studies and history teachers for teaching our students about history and government during this time in our country. And it's, we all know how important it is, and I just wanted to say thank you to them. And I also really wanted to encourage everyone to listen to Amanda Gorman's poem that was read at the inauguration today. It really reminded me of the importance of teaching poetry, and one of the reasons I love that we participate in the Poetry Out Loud contest. And it really is a great example of how the arts and literature can be a powerful way to bring us together. And I also love that she turned to poetry early on to help herself overcome a speech impediment. So I really encourage everybody, if you haven't had a chance, to listen to it. And I believe PBS has actually also put out some lesson plans that teachers can use relating to the poem and her other poetry that's out there. That's all that I had. I don't know if anybody else has anything they would like to share.
I happened to take a look at the YouTube trailer or preview for Friday night, and it looks really good. So I plan to be there and enjoy it. I also wanted to just make a brief comment to thank Jody for the letter she sent to the community two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, when the assault on the Capitol occurred, we, that evening, we had a board meeting. And I really was pulled back and forth as to whether to say something or not. It was developing news. There was a lot that we knew. There was a lot that we did not know. And I really appreciated Jody's leadership in putting out a letter to the community about that incident. And also, what the teachers did to explain that incident in some of their classrooms and to, on a grade level basis, explain what was going on and use it as a teaching moment. So all around, the teachers, and especially Jody, for the comment to the community, I thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Chris? Go ahead, Chris.
Sure? Okay. Yeah, you, Holly, you brought social studies teachers, so I'm gonna go there. I echo a lot of what Jonathan was saying. I had the same feelings, you know. Because like, two weeks ago, we saw, you know, the worst of America. We saw, we saw a storming of the Capitol, which was just, you know, unbelievable and tragic and terrible. And two weeks later, we fast forward and we see the best of America. And it's not because of who was elected or which party. It's not relevant. It's the fact that there was a peaceful transition of power, you know, and that's the best of America. You know, and I just, I just want to talk to, I say something real quick to the teachers. It's just, you know, we serve a valuable role, and that valuable role right now is to share facts and truth. Really, there are no Republican facts. There are no Democratic facts. They're just facts. There's truth. You know, and it's so important that we, as teachers and educators, do that job and share that information. You know, the truth about Joe Biden is that he's gonna have some really good days as a president, and he's gonna have some really bad days as president. He's gonna do some great things, and he's gonna do some things that stink. And we need to recognize that. And they're both true, that he can do really good things and really bad things. And we need to focus on those facts and those truths and keep it there. Because I think that we've, unfortunately, as a society, we've wandered from them. We've created what we know as alternate facts, and we can't have that. We can't have that. But there needs to be one set of facts. I think that's a vital role that we, as a school, can play.
Christine?
I just wanted to bounce off your sentiments from Amanda Gorman this morning. She was absolutely amazing. I was blown away. And I'm not talking politically. I'm talking from an English, just talented perspective. And I'm glad that you brought up our, you know, our poets, poets at Bethlehem, and how we brought that to Bethlehem, because I think it's so important. But it was very inspirational, and she captured a lot of, I think, how the country has been feeling this past year. And not in a political view, just talking necessarily from COVID and how to be optimistic. And, you know, I hope everybody takes the time to take a look at it. And obviously, I think it was an inspiration for young women who did watch it to see, you know, she's young, 22, what you can accomplish, and just a great outlook. It was, it was just amazing to see. And I wanted to just bounce off you on it, because it really moved me, anyway.
Christine. Anybody else? Next up on our agenda is our presentation for this evening by Mr. Ray Nardelli on the Smart Schools Bond.
Well, hello. Thanks. Nice to see everybody. So I'm gonna give you an update on our Smart Schools project. We, as you know, a couple of years ago, we started this whole process, and we ended up submitting a proposal for a Phase One project. And there we go. Phase One project, then we completed that project. So we're gonna move on to Phase Two now. And so this, I'm just gonna give you a little bit of an update. So next slide. So just to remind you, this, this all came to be in about 2014, when all public schools across the state got a certain amount of funding to enhance their technology. It was a very, $2 billion, and Bethlehem had an allocation of just a little bit over $2 million. And there's no spending deadline, but given the state of financial times we're in, we felt it necessary to kind of move forward on this sooner than later. Next slide. So a couple of the requirements in order to be able to take part in this is that you have to get community engagement, talk to teachers, staff, administration, parents, students. And we've done all that over the course of these years. We have to have a solid technology infrastructure. And thank goodness, Sal left me in incredible hands as far as that goes. Sustainability, we need to be able to support whatever we purchase. And again, thanks to you all and the administration. We have a fantastic technology staff with the ability to sustain anything we purchase. And then we have to, we have to connect with the non-public schools, and I'll talk about them in a minute. Next slide. The things that we could spend our money on, internet connectivity, learning equipment, which is what we did in Phase One. We can construct facilities for pre-kindergarten. And then we could also spend this money on high-tech security. Next slide. So Phase One, as I mentioned it, we, we completed it. It was, we had to wait about a year between when we submitted our proposal and we got our funding. But it came through right at the perfect time. It was early summer. So we were able to kind of really get things going. And then we got the high school and middle school fully equipped over the summer of 2019. And by all accounts, it's, it's been a really successful project. And frankly, I feel blessed because we got that just in time. And because I think it's helping the teachers tremendously in the middle school and high school with this, with this hybrid situation and oftentimes, remote situation that they're in. So, so next slide. So now we're moving on to Phase Two. And this was always the thought, that we would upgrade our technology on our elementary schools. So we're looking at these numbers for, for the five different schools, a total of about 128 boards. That, that could fluctuate a little bit as we really get into the nitty-gritty of, of every single school and before we place our order. Next slide. So in preparation for this, for the last two years, we've been seeding these devices out in the elementary schools. As technology has been failing in the, in different rooms, rather than replace it with older technology, we've been replacing it with the newer technology just to see if this solution was going to be as effective in the elementary schools as it is in the high school and the middle school. So we have a good pool of teachers to, to talk to and pull information from. Next slide. So here's a couple of comments. We reached out to them. Deana Henderson over at Hammagrail, you know, just is saying lots of good things about it. The one nice thing is they have a computer built into them. As you can see, that's that little thing with antennas over to the right. That computer slots into the back. And that, along with the wireless keyboard and mouse that you can see on the podium over to the left, that makes this basically a standalone unit. So you could just turn this unit on. And because we live in the Google Cloud, all of the teacher's curricular content is on Google Drive or on the web. So just by, by slotting this in and connecting to it, teachers can do all, everything they need to do without connecting another physical device to it. Next slide. Justine Marinella Hammagrail, she's, she's also kindergarten, and she's one of our tech coaches. She's incredibly tech savvy, and I was happy that we were able to give her one for the last couple of years for her to test and try and give, give us lots of feedback on it. I was in a kindergarten classroom last week, and it was, it was amazing. It was a little girl's birthday. And she was up at the board, you know, dragging things around, calling kids up to the board. They were dragging things around. They were playing Happy Birthday videos. It was, I took a little bit of video. I don't have that to share with you. But it was really, it was very cool to see the little kids just, you know, interacting so naturally with the touch features of this board. Next slide. Kelly Ward, as you know, is over at Slingerlands, grade five. So we tried to give these devices to lots of different teachers and lots of different grades to, to be able to test things out. Again, she's, you know, talking here about how it's really helped. And again, because they don't have to connect a computer or a, or Chromebook to it. It's just a standalone device. It's, it's really proved to be really easy to use. Next slide. Last comment from Greg Valkovich over at Elsmere. He's in the library this year due to COVID, and so we slid one of these in there on wheels. And I should have taken a picture of him hugging the pedestal here because he, he basically says, "Ray, I don't know where I'm gonna be next, next year, as far as what classroom," but he said, "I'm taking this with me." So he loves it. Okay, next slide. So as far as community engagement, I, I've just been talking about the pilots that we've been running for the last 18 months. I met with the elementary principals back in November, talked about the plan to move forward with these. We then, Stephanie Berlin, our instructional technologist, and I presented to all five faculties faculty meetings during the month of December. We met with admin council last week, supervisors today, and then, of course, you all today. So we've been trying to get feedback, talk about our plan, and get comments and questions. Next slide. So the one, a couple of interesting things I found out recently due to the, well, with regard to the Smart Schools funding is, A, we had an overage from our first former middle school and high school project of about $150,000. That was because we had to, basically had to prepare this a month or a year ahead of time. By the time we actually made the purchase, the boards were a little cheaper than, than I had put the, the allocation in for. The, also, the installment cost was a little cheaper, so we ended up with an overage. Well, I found out from the Smart Schools folks that we could spend that, because we're buying exactly the same thing for the elementary schools, we could spend that immediately without putting any more paperwork in, which was a great, great thing to hear. So when I looked at the budgets of the five different elementary schools, it just so happens that Glenmont is almost right at $150,000 when I factor in all of their, all their classrooms and the different sizes and what they need. So the plan is that this spring, we're going to install, basically, we're gonna convert Glenmont completely to these ViewSonic interactive boards. And then the other happy news was that we don't have to submit from scratch a present, or a proposal for this next round because, again, we're buying the same things just for different classrooms. So all we have to do is file an amendment, which hopefully will speed it up a little bit. No guarantee on that, but that's the hope. So as soon as I get, I've been back and forth with Smart Schools the last week. And as soon as I get final approval from them, I'm gonna submit the amendment. And then, then it's a waiting game. The, the committee, they haven't met since July to, to review these projects. So, which kind of means, I think they're gonna, they're gonna meet pretty soon. So if, if it's possible for us to get in on that review session, that, that would be tremendous. The hope, you know, crossing my fingers, would be that if they could possibly approve us by this summer, then we can, well, we'll have the summer months to kind of get this together and into the classrooms for next school year. But part of me says, don't even think about it. Just think about one year. So one year from today, maybe we'll be, we'll be approved. And if, if earlier, then that'll be a pleasant surprise. Next slide. As far as our non-publics go, their allotment is totally based on enrollment at the moment that this program was announced, so 2013. That top line is the enrollment numbers of those different schools. And bottom line, they each got $250 per student. So 250 times that number on the top line is their total allotment. And during Phase One, that second line shows what they spent. They bought interactive panels and Chromebooks and some computers. And then what they have remaining is on that bottom line. And I've been in contact with all three schools, so they're gonna be getting me their order to complete that process. And finally, once we spend, and frankly, I don't think, even though I put a budget of $590 something, I can't remember the exact number, I don't think it's gonna be that much. So I think we're gonna end up with more leftover than $282 at the end of Phase Two. But we'll see, once, once everything shakes out. But I've been talking to Greg Nolte about security cameras. They, we have recently moved from one security system to another. And I believe in the last bond, we have upgraded many security cameras to the newest, to the newest system. But we still have a lot to go. So we may use the remaining Smart Schools dollars on security cameras. Or another option is, we need to connect all of our wiring closets in the high school with fiber optics. So we have somewhere in a range of eight to 10 different little wiring network closets around that big, massive high school, all coming back to the main server room. So right now, they're all connected with copper. And eventually, we need to, to connect them with fiber. So that's up for debate. We'll be deciding that once we, once we get the amendment through. So that concludes my presentation. So if you have any questions, I'm ready for that.
Thanks, Ray. I just had one quick question, which is, in the elementary schools, I know, I think a lot of, if not all, the classrooms have those smart boards in them. When these new boards go in, what's happening with the old ones?
Well, any ones that have value, we'll, we have lots of options to sell them. Either, so we can put them on public surplus. That's kind of the standard way. But we could also offer them to other schools. And, and there's, there's other avenues to, companies who are constantly emailing me for my old equipment. So there's, there's lots of ways to, to get money back from any of those projectors and boards that are still not too old. I mean, there's, there's a good smattering out there, actually. There's some very old ones, and there's some that are on the newer side that I'm sure we can get some value from.
Okay. And with, with the new boards, are you finding that, that they're fairly intuitive? Or should the teachers, like, for example, at Glenmont, is there gonna be a learning curve for them with figuring out how to, how to operate them?
Yeah, it's um, we will definitely do uh lots of professional development, just like we did in the middle school and the high school. Uh during um tech boot camp a couple summers ago, we had um basic uh, you know, open, open, kind of an open lab where teachers would just come and play. And we had um all of our tech coaches, uh our high school and middle school tech coaches were running those. So probably the first thing we would do is, we have five uh elementary tech coaches, uh one in each building, plus, as I mentioned, Stephanie Berlin, our our instructional technologist. So between the six of those, um and then I have some others on my staff like Navarre Johnson. Um, so we would uh, we would make sure that the tech coaches are all very familiar with with those boards and then we'll, we'll just run um sessions to make sure that everybody is. In fact, thinking about it, in the middle school and the high school, we actually had, we 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 would, we did one-on-one sessions. We, once the board was in their room, uh teachers made appointments and a tech coach would go to their room and spend like fifteen or twenty minutes with them, just helping them log in, um log uh s- s- sign on to Google, uh make sure that their files were there and and giving them some basics. And then we continued to do professional development as we go, um, you know, after that initial set. So for sure.
And does anybody else have questions for Ray? Meredith?
Um, first, Ray, I just want to say thank you um for being so diligent, you know, back in two thousand eighteen or whenever it was that you filed this paperwork. Um, if you had not, you know, done that so quickly and been on the ball and made these forward-thinking plans, we would not have been able to operate as we have this year. So I really wanted to thank you um for your forward thinking. I'm sure you did not imagine this, but I appreciate that um you were so diligent with that. Um, but uh you did say in phase three, you know, we do have a little bit more money to spend. And so I wanted to ask um how our network strength is currently, you know, whether or not we have the bandwidth. Certainly, when we were, when you were putting together the the network, you were not imagining every single teacher live streaming all day um in every single classroom. So do we have, you know, how is our network at that point? Is that something we need to upgrade?
I have to say that coming, coming into this, this year, I'm not a, I'm not usually a nervous guy. Um, but you can't, you can't really load test a system like, excuse me, our network until everyone comes on board and they start to do everything that uh that they were um, you know, going to do. And and I was nervous, all of us tech uh tech directors, who I'm I'm in a tech director group, and we were all kind of on pins and needles those first weeks. But I, 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 since I came on, um I added a um a backup or a secondary internet connection. So now, instead of just, numbers probably won't mean a whole lot, but we had a five hundred um megabit connection when I, when we had three hundred, then we moved it to five hundred. Now we have two five hundreds. So we have a gigabit of 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 a pipe, so to speak, out to the internet. And as far as um, so so there's no uh bandwidth issues going out or coming in. Now, the question was how, what was our network like internally, um going from room to room and and that kind of thing? Um, and, you know, in the end, we we ended up, you guys supported um upgrades to our firewall, which is a big deal because all the traffic goes through our firewall. So we installed that this summer prior to, you know, this, this crazy fall. Um, and that that helped tremendously because with the additional processing power of our our dual firewalls, um that was able to kind of move traffic a lot, a lot more expediently than it was last year. Um, so anyway, to kind of a long-winded answer to say, we are in good shape. And I can only tell you that because on paper, we were in good shape, but we're doing great out there. I mean, I think there's, and that's not to say that there's not hiccups here and there for sure. Um, you know, I think there, there's days that that Google is slow, um, you know, and and you go on something called uh, you know, the the down detector website and it shows Google is down or Google Docs are down or whatever. So you, you know, from day to day, it's always, um, you never quite sure why things are a little sluggish or slow. But we have a lot of um, uh, we have the ability to kind of diagnose. If a teacher does say that um their network is a little slow, we can put some devices in that area to diagnose, to see what the problem is. Um, so most of the time, it's not our network, it's something else. Um, it could be the site people are connecting to. Um, but anyway, long story short, um our network is 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 very solid. And over the course of the next five years, we're going to be upgrading our network. Um, you'll be hearing more about that over the, you know, over the course of board meetings, I'm sure.
Great. Well, I just want to say thank you to you and your staff for um all of your work this year. I know it's been a crazy year, but you really have made what we're doing this year possible, so I appreciate it. And then my last question is just whether or not um there has been more uh wear and tear on our Chromebooks this year just because more kids are bringing it back and forth and whether or not we need to um up the number of Chromebooks that we buy per year to um get more into circulation.
Um, I don't think we need to buy additional Chromebooks. So yeah, we are seeing of, uh our repair, our repair budget has been on a pretty nor uh steep up upward trend over the last couple of years. Um, and uh we're actually, um, so a couple of things. We do probably ninety or eighty to ninety percent of repairs ourself um with the staff that we have. Uh, so we buy parts directly from Acer and um then we do the repairs ourselves. So a lot of the, we were saving a lot of money by doing the, by doing that ourselves. Um, and uh we just made a decision to switch over to a Dell Chromebook, from an Acer Chromebook to a Dell. Um, just to uh, we, we did a pilot with some Dells and they seemed a little bit more durable than um than the Acers. So um we, we ordered um Chromebooks the first week of July and I just heard this morning that they might be here by the end of January. Um, so uh, we'll see. And and actually, you know who's suffering? Um, our fifth graders are suffering. Um, and uh some, well, I, some of the younger grades, uh I think first grade had the old ones and fifth grade had the old one. The fifth graders for the moment, you know, I think are really struggling. And there's a lot of other, um, when you're asking about, should we have more Chromebooks? I mean, we have an incredible amount of these older Chromebooks that, thank God, again, somebody was watching out, you know, it was dumb luck, we, we were going to get rid of them and we didn't. Um, and so we have all these older Chromebooks that we're able to give uh students, um but they don't perform anywhere near as well as the bet, as the newer ones. So I've been so desperate to get those into the fifth grader's hands. Um, so hopefully by the early part of February, they'll have new Chromebooks. Um, but, you know, we just, I mean, I've, 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 you know, looked into insurance. Uh, I've looked into maybe asking the, you know, the, asking parents to pay a nominal fee. A lot of schools do that, you know, I've, uh, where, you know, um, parents will pay twenty-five dollars um just to kind of cover repairs. But, you know, so far, we're doing okay. Um, and if it gets, you know, if it gets out of hand, we'll, we'll, we'll have to deal with it when we get there. But um there's no doubt that there's a lot more wear and tear in them. As you know, I think all, the whole elementary, well, three through five, we purchased really kind of very durable cases for them. So when they do carry them back and forth, they have um, and actually for the middle school too. So for grades three through uh eight, they have um nice durable cases. And then when they get to high school, you know, they just take care of them.
Willow, did you have a question?
Um, yes, if I can remember what it was. Uh, the, the boards that you presented on tonight, the, the smart machines, what is the shelf life that we can expect out of them? And does the cost that we paid for them include a warranty of any sort or upgrades? I'm just sort of wondering when the next outlay of that.
Yeah, that's a really great question. The uh, so think about those boards and in as two main pieces. You got the TV, I'll call it, and that's got a life of about ten years. So there's not, no moving parts in that, that's going to, you know, th- those should last. Those have a five-year warranty, so if if there's any problems with those for five years, um, we'll get a replacement. Um, but by all accounts and the fact that, you know, devices like this have been around for a while, they have about a ten years shelf life. The computer that slots into the back of them, they have about a five-year uh shelf life or useful life, I'll say. So um and we've already, that we, that's already a part of my, my five-year budget. I mean, they're, they're, they're already slotted in my budget to be replaced. I think, I don't know, and well, this is year two that they're being used. So they're, they're going to be used for three more years before we have to replace those computers. Um, so yeah, it'll be um twenty twenty-nine when we'll be thinking about replacing boards. And and who knows, maybe the last twelve years. I mean, we'll, we'll just have to see where technology goes.
Yeah. Um, okay, and then the other question was about whether or not they had um accessibility for students with visual disabilities?
Their computer, so whatever um, you know, whatever you can install on a computer, they're, they're, I mean, basically, they're just a Windows computer with a humongous touchscreen. Um, so anything that you can install on a Windows computer um will, you know, you, you could utilize on those devices. So um, you know, I think that's a, you know, yeah, that's a question. Uh, we, we haven't had, to my knowledge, we haven't had any special requests like that on, in the middle school and high school. Um, even, even though um, well, we do have them in in some of the uh SaaS, SaaS rooms. So there must be software that they are using. Um, but because it's just a a computer, we haven't really been involved too much in in in, you know, helping those through.
My um, my son's classroom has one and it's been um an invaluable tool as far as I can tell um in the skills room. So high praise as a, as a parent who hasn't actually seen it in action, but hears about how it motivates my student to learn, so.
That's great to hear. Is that Elsmere?
Ha- Hammagrail.
Hammagrail, okay, great, that's awesome.
I, I, I think that's what he has, maybe he has something different. He was on, his teacher was on the list in in one of the slides.
Well, when, whenever, whenever we, we get back to normal and you all go out there and visit schools like you do once a year, hopefully, uh, you know, we'll have some, some of these, well, we do have some in the elementary classrooms. You should, you should watch them because it's, it is really fun watching them, those digital natives.
Anybody else have questions for Ray? Ray, oh, Jonathan, did you have something?
I just wanted to say thank you to Ray for the job he's doing. Uh, really wonderful, all the devices that you've gotten out, the speed with you've gotten them out and the fact that they keep working. So thank you.
Well, it's, it's, it's my staff. I mean, again, I'm, I'm blessed with the staff of, you know, with a great staff, that, that, you know, and and the numbers too. I mean, we, we added a help desk tech this year. Um, and we just, we have the people who can support, you know, anybody who needs assistance. And um, yeah, it's been, it's, yeah, it's a great situation we're in. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray, for presenting to us and answering all of our questions.
All right. You're welcome.
All right, next up on our agenda tonight is our recognition of public comment. Um, we did have a few comments that came in. Um, as usual, all the comments will be attached um completely to the minutes. Um, and, but I will summarize them at this point. We had two comments that came in, one from Christian Greco and one from Carol Butt, um encouraging the district to look into the purchase of electric school buses um and advocating for electric school buses um with respect to their impact on uh on the climate. Um, we had one question that came in um from Janet McLaughlin um asking, I'd like to know when decisions will be made about spring sports, um particularly those that were pushed from fall. Um, I'm assuming she means the fall two uh sports, um both if they will happen and if so, which levels. Um, and Jody, I don't know if at this point you have any information you can share about fall two or the spring. Um, and if not, we.
There, I mean, there's been no updates from the state on anything related to spring sports at this time.
Okay. I figured we were still kind of in a holding pattern, but thought I'd check.
Jody, Jody, do we, I'm sorry, do we have any plans yet in terms of other spring activities? Spring concert series or anything that we would normally be planning right now beyond sports?
Um, yeah, one of the things obviously um we would look to do is um try to get some after-school activities going, um even if it's small numbers. Uh, getting kids to be able to access their teachers at the secondary level after school. Uh, I had meetings about the uh musicals uh in the spring, uh about some possible options for those, so we are looking at that. I mean, right now, the numbers, um, you know, and the weather aren't that conducive. Uh, but yeah, those are some things that we are um looking to be able to offer, so.
Um, we also had a comment from Claudia Miranda Julian um who writes that she reviewed the working draft of the Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative Plan uh that the um the town and the committee is, are putting together um and asks whether members can speak to the rationale involved in continuing to support the wearing of sidearms um by SRO and DARE officers on school grounds. Um, and uh, Jody, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they're required by law to wear them, um, the uh police officers, and that's why they do.
That's correct.
Um, we also had a comment that came in from Michael Gibbons asking if the high school has any plans um to keep the senior class engaged, uh recognizing that they um are unfortunately looking to lose about a year and a half um if COVID continues. Um, and uh stating that there's been minimal communication um about the effect on them and any plan to give them a sense of connection to the school and that they really have had nothing to look forward to. Um, so Jody, maybe, you know, I'm wondering if maybe Dave um Domell, if we could forward this comment to him um and maybe he could uh reach out to this parent um and uh see if he can address the concern.
Um, sure, we can do that. And just um, so the board knows, I know that Dave has sent a couple of communications out to parents um specifically about the senior class and gave them um who would be helping to coordinate activities similar to what happened last spring. So um who the senior class advisors are, who the student senate, um who the parent, the uh parent um groups are. So I know he has shared that a couple of different times, so I'm not sure if maybe this parent didn't get that information, but I can have Dave follow up with him.
Okay, great. And then we had um one last comment uh that came in from Christian Montenegro, um which includes um a few questions about um the COVID updates um in the, the emails that we receive with COVID updates and what does it mean when it states no exposure at the school? How is exposure measured? Um, and then there's another, a, a number of um other questions about um the decisions to uh buy the school to go virtual, um when that happens, when it doesn't happen. Um, so Jody, I was thinking I could um forward that email to you um and maybe you could take a look and uh address some of those comments um uh to uh that email and maybe also consider them for the parent presentations next week.
Yep, we can do that.
Uh, next on the agenda, um item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one and two.
So moved.
So moved. Second. Uh, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one and two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through nine.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through four.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item seven, future meetings and events. Our next board meeting is on Wednesday, February third, at seven o'clock, anticipating executive session at six. We have a policy committee meeting scheduled for Monday, February twenty-second, at six o'clock. And then the board meeting after that is on Wednesday, February twenty-fourth, at seven, anticipating executive session at six. And the meeting after that is on March third, at seven, again, anticipating executive session starting at six. Seeing no need to adjourn to an executive session at this point, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Good night.